Talked about in concept allowing parking on street to count and having some different kind of street edge treatments, that's above and beyond.
Okay, and just so to clarify in my mind, if we do miss the July date and it we revert to the state model, when we do approve our new code, it goes back and supersedes the state, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Marcy, the show is yours.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen and I'm going to try making this PDF an entire screen, so I don't know if I lose the ability to see people, but I've never done this, let's see, full screen mode. Oh, good, I can still see everybody. So first of all, I want to say thanks for this, for being here and, you know, bearing with this process. Now where we are, as Scott said, really getting into a lot of the detail. Some of it is, I know a lot to take in all at once and I'm pretty sure that we're gonna have another work session, there are more details to work out. But what your package consists of right now is the things that I got pretty good agreement on as a code concept at the last meeting. Therefore, I've turned them into amendments language. There are some code concepts that make people maybe having want more discussion about, so there's certainly, this is the time to talk about those. For example, the floor area ratio concept. But there are also additional concepts that I didn't get very clear response to last time. And so before we leave, I want to make sure that I have enough information to come back with amendments for those things. So that's why this agenda says we're going to discuss this whole package. I'm gonna break it down for you because I think it's pretty, it might be somewhat disorienting, the way that is organized wasn't exactly what I had envisioned, but and there are a lot of attachments and there are a lot of, there's a lot of sections of your code that we're not changing, but you see it anyway and it's many, many, many pages. But I'm gonna break it down so it's simple and we can take it piece by piece. The goal is to get to the end of this session with amendments that you agree on, I can move forward with, and concepts that you can offer me more direction about, I can move forward on amendments for those. Does anybody have a question at this point or suggestion for the agenda? I don't see any hands, so. Okay, I'm gonna move forward. If I can, my computer will allow me to. Okay, so I wanted to go over, maybe for people over here. Just kind of an accounting of where we were at the last meeting and what I'm presenting to you. There have been some adjustments or refinements, I would say. But these are the things that we talked about in concept at the last meeting. I'm just gonna go through these bullet points one by one. We agreed to go ahead and reduce the number of use zones from five to two and an overlay. What I've presented to you, though, is actually three separate base zones. And I decided that that was a cleaner way to go through this. So it's, we are still reducing from five, but now we have three new base zones that replace those five. So the middle housing two is not an overlay, it's a new base zone. Also, to meet your mandate to me where the have to do's and wanna do housing types are allowed everywhere. There's none of this, some here, some there, they're completely intermixed. And now that we have a middle housing one or MH1 and two and three, we're gonna treat those all with a form-based code approach, so we'll have the larger sizes in MH2 and smaller sizes in MH1 and MH3. Actually, I think I got that wrong, sorry. It's MH1 is the smaller sizes and MH2 and MH3 are the larger sizes. So for example, the townhouses in MH1 are limited to two attached. In MH2, you could have more, say up to four, or potentially even more in the MH3 zone. Yeah, so that's where we, that's where we were last month and where we are today. I want to give you a little hint about the package that if you want to follow along in the package, I've identified the pages that I'm gonna be talking about, the PDF bookmark. If you use bookmarks, you can go to that. But the easiest way to think about this package is through this table. So I'm gonna walk you through the table one by one and raise your hand if you can't read this text. I'll make this slide bigger. Anybody having a problem reading the text? Brad, sure, I'm sure you're not the only one, let me. If I can.
Try these bifocals, anybody that can't.
Let's see, I can't quite get it to increase. Yeah, I was worried that this.
You might have to X this out of full screen, yeah.
Right, I'm sorry, I guess I do. So let me make this bigger, I can control that more easily this way. Alright, so preceding the track change amendments to your code text, I gave you a table, this is supposed to help orient us overall to where you're gonna see the track change edits, which chapter, which article. So then, and now, as soon as I go through this overview, we're gonna go through each of these sections from the top to the bottom. In Article One, introductory provisions, we're changing Section 1.030 to add all the definitions of the new housing types. And there's also another amendment in there that isn't resolved yet, it's about the use of the term family. We'll discuss that when we get there. And then I'm amending the list of the zones and amending the maps. So that's what these three sections here are for. And then the next part of the table explains that in the use zones article, we're changing all of these sections. We are reducing the number of use zones from that number to three. We're explicitly listing and permitting the housing types in the use table. So along with a single dwelling, you will now see a listing of the multi-dwelling and duplexes and et cetera. This is also where we have development standards that permit the housing types that we've discussed. And this is also where we're establishing a floor area ratio, because one does not exist yet for residential use. And this is also where we set up a give back program. And we're increasing the maximum height to 35 feet, but you'll see all these changes when we get to that article. In supplemental provisions, there's just a little bit of text that I've taken out since we're going to be replacing multifamily or apartment criteria with form-based code standards. And then in the off-street parking, we are striking current requirements for parking to be located on the same lot. We're also gonna permit required parking spaces to be located on-street instead of onsite. And we're customizing the on-street parking approaches. As we've discussed in the past, these may also be, have to be amended in the public works standards. And we're allowing shared parking ranges, which are not permitted now. And then we're reducing the number of parking spaces. So that's the like, I know the packet seems very long, but that's all that we're doing, which is a lot, but that's, but it's somewhat limited. Yeah, we have some questions, so I think I saw Gary, I think I saw Bert raised his hand and Karen, do you still want to ask a question?
No questions, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So if I, I just want to make sure that I understand what you're talking, you're calling these use zones. Are they, are we keeping the designations of R2, R3, R4, or those are going to completely go away? And we'll be talking about MH1, MH2, MH3?
Yes.
So in the, in the Amendment A, those are really just for our reference to see what, compare how things look now to how things will look in the future. But the R-zone maps will disappear.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that answered my question.
Bert, did you still have a question?
No, no question.
Alright, so. Lee, yeah, please, Lee.
Hi, Marcy.
Hi.
I'm confused a little bit with all the material that we got. And happily, you already referenced it as a lot, so I appreciate that. You made comment a moment ago, correct me if I'm wrong, that MH1 was going to be limited in terms of the number of units, does that kind of fall in line with your thinking?
MH1, since I am in this view, I'm gonna go to the maps and just show middle housing one is what was, what it will become what is now R2.
Okay, well, my confusion lies in looking at the chart that came with the material in the packet. It shows that in MH1, triplexes and quadplexes are permitted. So is this, was this a preliminary table to kind of get our juices wet until we figure out where we're going?
There, I'm sorry, you said those, those housing types are what?
Permitted.
Yes, they're permitted, but they may have some supplemental standards that go in this section here, so jumping back up to the table of contents here. Middle housing supplemental provisions. That is where we would define that there may only be two in our, in MH1, but more attached in the other zones.
Okay, so to be clear, MH1 does allow for numbers of attached units beyond two.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I do have a follow-up question to that. You've mentioned floor area ratio a couple of times, I was gonna wait until you actually got to that, but I'm gonna ask it now. In your experience, does floor area ratio include garages?
Yes, typically it does.
Really, okay, that's gonna really limit, potentially, that's gonna really limit what people can do with the amount of space available on the land. Just my thoughts.
Sure, I mean, and we are here to discuss that. I know that that floor area ratio proposal, it's something that you asked me to come back to you with, and what I've come back with is a draft concept, so we'll need to talk about it. Those those, that idea that you just posed about not maybe exempting garage space from FAR, that's done in commercial areas, so I didn't, we could discuss doing it here.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Now, I would like to go back up to the top and start here. And for some reason, I have a landscaping service outside our neighbor's house, so let me know if you can't hear me. This is the, so this is the beginning of the many, many-page zoning ordinance. It's your zoning ordinance, so I'm sure you're all relatively familiar with this. And what I have done is simply made it clear what we're changing in terms of, let me make this a bit bigger. Proposed text is bold and deleted text is struck through. And so another little tip for you is a quick way to know which pages we've changed. If you're scrolling through the PDF is to look for the pink. And so, starting with the first change that we're making in this table of contents is that we are renaming and reorganizing the use zones. You'll see middle housing one, MH1 replaces R2. And middle housing two, MH2 replaces R3 and R4. And further down, SRR is replaced with MH2, let's see what happened to that. This is supposed to be replaced with MH3. Missed that one. Any questions about that? When we get to 4160, or this section that's called supplemental provisions, which is where kind of all of the additional to land use or development standards are, this is where those live, things that apply to home occupations, for example. Though, we will have a new section here. I've given it this name, this number 4.160, that may change. But that is where all of the standards for the townhouses and cottage clusters and plexes, that's where they will live, those are in draft form. At this point, we'll need another work session to go through those. And I also didn't want to load a lot of more information on you at this point. Alright, so I'd like to go through the introductory provisions and talk about the definitions now. So jumping to the pink text. Let me see if I've got most of the changes on single page, okay, so we are adding an accessory dwelling unit definition, cottage cluster definition. We're changing multifamily to multi-unit, and we're also saying that a multi-dwelling unit means a building that contains five or more. So we struck through the word three, and that is because we have plexes that go up to four, and so everything five or more is, would be considered a multi-dwelling unit. Any questions about that? And.
Marcy.
Yes, is that Tom?
Yeah. Are these definitions consistent with state law?
Yes.
Okay, so they're in the ORS somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't know if I need to go through each of these, but a quadplex is four and a triplex is three. And the townhouse is a dwelling unit that's part of a row of two or more attached, and they're each on their own lots. So, and you didn't have a definition for that before. Then.
Alright, me again.
Yep.
Courtyard apartments? Do they go under another name?
I'm going to consider those. Let me see.
We've been talking about this.
They're going to be considered a, I think the way I would like to deal with those in 4.160 supplemental standards is they're simply an attached cottage cluster.
Okay.
Now, the cottage cluster, just a little information about the state requirement for cottage clusters, they're quite particular. This is the definition for those, a grouping of no fewer than four detached dwelling units per acre with a footprint of less than 900 square feet each, and a common courtyard. And I, in supplemental standards, I will be making clear that an attached version of those is permitted. So I guess this would mean that we would probably want to change this word right here, detached. Or detached or attached. Bert?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, I obviously, there's a lot of information here, so. But we can change from that four units per acre, which doesn't really seem applicable to our community, to something more like four units per 9,500 square foot lot, or something like that, can't we?
You know, this is a, you asked, you raised the question that always gets asked about cottage clusters. This is language from the ORS, and I don't, I've never totally understood what four detached dwelling units per acre means. I may have to do more talking to state people about this, but this is the cottage cluster is the housing type that has no maximum density on it. It's the one we talked about the last meeting. I think, John, you said, that's my kind of housing type, it has totally form-based. It's very, this is very prescriptive in terms of the size of the dwelling units and the amount of common area that has to be provided per each dwelling unit and the size of each dwelling unit. But if you meet all of those other standards, you do not have to be under a certain density, it's like what you can put on the site is how it's defined. And so I think this, to your point, Bert, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but I actually think it's meaningless in the end.
Well, maybe you just strike the units per acre or something like that.
I'm not sure if we can, that's kind of a question I need to vet with some state, with some state support people.
Okay, well, it doesn't make sense, you have four 900 square foot units on an acre, as an example, so maybe just look into that one. Another question I have is about cohousing and group homes and some different kinds of housing that doesn't seem to fit right in well with all these definitions at the moment, and maybe I've missed something.
You know, the group, I don't know if we want to go into this. Maybe we can talk about when we get to the use table, because your code is out of date in terms of state-licensed group, group living situations. This is an area where it needs to be updated and made conforming to current definitions with state rules for licensing and formation of these types of institutional living. This is also not necessarily addressing your question about cohousing. Cohousing, to me, is not something that is has to be spelled out in the development code.
But, but the requirement to have kitchens and stuff like that, if that's part of the code, would kind of make cohousing have to have kitchens in each of the say cottages, as opposed to a common kitchen that's very common with cohousing, shared facility.
Agree, and you could do what some city, we could do what some cities have done, which is allow separate bedroom units. I think there's some precedent for that, and I can look into if you're if you would like to explicitly permit.
Yeah, maybe just kind of check that out so we don't preclude somebody doing, you know, a senior cohousing project with a group kitchen and living room and stuff like that in separate buildings.
Okay, John?
Can we, I'm still a little unsure about the cottage cluster. Is our, our goal in most of our discussion has been limiting the size of and density of different types of units. This seems to be kind of the opposite of that, I mean, four 900 square foot units per acre is like a lot of land and very little housing. I know that the cottage cluster that we've approved, the one I was involved in was like 14 units per acre, something Scott can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but and I think the, the one at the end of Dorcas is similar to that. Is, did you, did you say this was a state mandated definition or a state definition?
Yes, and I do want to clarify that this a grouping of no fewer than four detached dwelling units, I want to make sure everyone's reading that. Just that is a protection against having a cottage cluster that's not very dense.
I agree, that's what I thought we were trying to, but I would think we would want it closer to the 14 than the four.
Yes, so am I hearing that so there are places in, definitely in the, between the ORS and the model code where there are choices that a city can make? And if it is something that you'd like me to push toward, is a choice, if there is a choice area in terms of more dense, like a minimum number of, is required of cottages in a cottage cluster, we can certainly either word that in the definitions here or word it explicitly in the supplemental standards for cottage clusters.
Yeah, either way, if there is flexibility in the, either the ORS or the model code, I would like to see that number denser, you know, maybe 10 or, you know, pick a number, but like I said, the ones we've approved have been 14-ish, I believe.
John, I think that's probably the way to tackle it so that it's not an inefficient use of land, is just right, the density requirement.
And if we put it in our supplemental conditions, that's okay too, but I would think we, well, we need to do what the state mandates, if that's their definition, we have to do it, but I would like to pick it up in the supplemental if we can.
But that's, the state mandate is the minimum, we can exceed.
Yes, agree.
I would like to have a higher minimum in the city if we can make that happen.
I think there's, I think there is precedent for that.
Let me jump in if I may, I too would like a higher density, but I, it's not, I can't envision an acre, I don't know what that looks like, I don't want to make it so dense that this type of housing becomes unattainable. Like, someone says, we're never gonna have a cottage cluster here because you have to have so many. But four per acre does sound to me, even with my lack of imagination, that's a little bit of house on a lot of land, right?
Yes, I agree, let's, let's table the discussion about cottage clusters. I'll come back to you with more deliberation on where cities have a choice and where many cities have landed, and also what these look like.
Yeah, that would be helpful, at least to me.
But could I just add just one more comment as far as where we put things? We're only looking at the definitions right here, and it's really helpful if all of the definitions for everything that we are defining is in one place, so that we don't have to look at it, you know. Yes, but there's another definition that we have to deal with somewhere else, that, that's our, my goal is to make sure that anytime you need to look something up, what does that mean? It's in this place. And then if there are additional conditions that belong to it, then those can be supplemental or wherever else.
I agree, Karen, that's what we're, that's what, that's what my job is to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
The labor, but just wanted to be clear, thank you.
I mean, the elegant balance between what's in definitions and what's in supplemental standards is yes, there's no duplication. The dwell, the definition is somewhat descriptive, but simple enough encompasses all of the things that the supplemental standards require or permit. And there's no conflict between the two and no duplication, so that's where we will wind up. I do want to point to this dwelling unit. So I'm, I'm working through what you have worked on in the past regarding accessory dwelling units. I'm trying to incorporate that work into this package. An accessory dwelling unit is not actually a required. Actually a required middle housing type, but I think that we can, we can um. Build it into this package. So all that I've really provided at this point while I'm trying to reconcile. The language is is the way that you described this in your planning commission public discussion memo from twenty twenty one. Um as a reference, and other than that, I don't have a a conclusion about it yet. Does anybody want to talk about the accessory dwelling unit before we move on? I don't hear anything. I did put in this definition, which is kind of a the official state definition for accessory dwelling unit, though. As a proposal to take out. Um, I'm sorry, for a dwelling unit. This is the official state definition for a dwelling unit. And then lastly, I think we're almost to the end of um definitions. I want to point out this family. Uh there's apparently. Um new legislation that all of us code amandars for middle housing have to be uh up to date about. And I'm still trying to get exactly what the language is for this definition that is not considered a um. To be out of compliance with ORS ninety point one one two, which restricts cities from limiting occupancy based on familial relationship. So I'll be back with a new definite, a a more certain state sanctioned definition for that in the next package. Okay, so moving on. Um you may notice that I have the height of building highlighted. We're not changing this, but I did want. People to be aware that this is how you per currently. Measure height of buildings, so we may want to return to this when we talk about. The height increase that we're that is being proposed. So now to the next um section, which is to look at attachment A, and um these are the maps. These start on page six to seven of your PDF or they're bookmarked as. Attachment A new zones maps. You wanted to look at them. There's. Um a map here, a base map for reference. But the R two zone has now isn't being proposed as middle housing one. Let me, sorry, let me go to this graphic. That's middle housing one on the right. And. Little housing two is a combination of R three, R four, and R M D. And then the S R R zone uh is a third base zone. Are there any questions about this? This is consistent with the proposal from last time. I think that there was pretty. Solid agreement on this. Um except I will just say, Karen, you brought up that um. You want you wanted to have a discussion about this uh R M D possibly. Becoming. A different zone, but maybe you could remind me what that conversation was about. And I also see Bert has raised his hand. Bert.
Uh yeah, just a a question. These these are essentially based upon the existing zones and uh. Did did you do any math associated with, is this actually. Increasing the overall density within the city, or is it kind of keeping it the same, or that's one question. And then an auxiliary question is if. If it's not. I mean. You know, the R R two zone is two units, two that townhouse with common wall, for instance, which is up and down my street already. Um, do we need to consider. Uh modifying the areas of some of these zones if that's where the uh increase in density is actually going to happen? And uh as an example, uh. Our foreign R three zone. Uh, does the, does a boundary of that need to increase? As just a point of conversation or other areas, the boundaries need to increase in order to increase the capacity. And utilization of pretty scarce land in the city.
Well, I'm starting from a point of. Um understanding that most of that many of your lots, a a third to a half of your lots are are not conforming in terms of size. So today. On paper, you could build two dwelling units per lot. You know, it's in the code, but you have to have twenty five hundred square feet. Each to do that, and many of your lots are not five thousand square feet. And this is probably a legacy of you of Manzanita being a resort town that was platted. And then in the sixties or seventies, when the state, you know, instituted statewide land use planning, you probably got a copy paste code. From someplace else that said five thousand square foot lots were, you know, what you have, but but you actually don't have. Five thousand square foot lots. Um they were probably smaller in a in the resort plat. Uh so I don't know if this makes sense, but what I'm i- if if nothing else, uh we are starting with the fact that you can now build, you can. Now. Truly build two dwelling units on every lot. So we are kind of doubling the density to begin with. Then um. We're also allowing all of these different housing types, like all of the housing types that are in the middle housing code are going to be allowed in R two. They're just going to be, they're going to have to meet a smaller form. As we mentioned, townhouses, we talked about limiting those to two attached, so you might have. Something that looks like a regular Manzanita house today, but it's actually two attached units on their own lot. Um but they look like a house, but in R three and R four, you might be able to have up to uh four. So the goal was to have um kind of bigger densities in these areas. But.
Make make.
Doubling the density as a as a basic step forward.
Yeah, uh maybe uh it's the minimum lot size, which is what effectively will increase the overall. Development compactness, right? So if we're at twelve fifty as an example. Then uh on a five thousand square foot lot, you should be able to do four units, correct? And and so.
Do four units on their own lot, but you can also do two units without having to divide the land.
Well, that's kind of the question I I have is uh. Uh limit it to two units as this as opposed to four units. Does that, i- if if you understand where where I'm headed, is or is it more effective to talk about these different housing types and then. Really control how much gets put on a site by the uh. Units or the the lot size.
Yeah, let me see if we we should probably move into talking about the housing types that are permitted. Because quadplexes are permitted in your in your middle housing one, so if somebody can make four units fit in a. Uh a smaller housing shape that we're going to be creating for our for middle housing one, they could do four units. Or they could subdivide and do one thousand two hundred and fifty or slightly greater uh lots. So I feel like we should talk about the the uses that are permitted. And maybe start there. That are permitted in each of the zones. Brad.
Thanks, Marcy. Picking up a little bit on what Bert is asking. Can you clarify and maybe I can give you an example to help, but I'll just ask the question straight up first. Does the P U D then, does a a P U D overlay into, say, an M H one or an M H two, or. Say, for example, somebody is doing four units. On one on a five thousand square foot lot, what is? The criteria. To define a P U D and and how it would work in one of these zones?
Have um, so in the last packet. We brought forward the the new land division chapter that's replacing. Your current land division or subdivision chapter. That really supersedes the P U D process. It says. How lots are going can be divided, what the criteria for lot division is. Um what the the uh. Criteria for the housing types and how they have to face. The street, uh how much frontage they need to have, et cetera. That's going to be part of the supplemental standards. In your ninety five four ordinance. So I don't know if people have had a chance to read the land division chapter.
So are you saying a P U D?
Doesn't exist.
Do. Will not exist going forward?
Yes, it will be replaced by. Um really clear criteria for a lot size and orientation and front, street frontage. Access for utilities, all of that is.
That hasn't been fully vetted or defined in its entirety yet. Is that correct?
It's in the land division draft that was that was part of your packet last month.
Can you, okay, maybe, can you just apply in a sentence or two how that would? Maybe I missed it and I apologize, and I'll go back and take a look, but can you apply that? As an example on a uh M H one or an M H two, where maybe four units are on one lot? That new. Criteria?
You you mean instead of the P U D?
Yeah, what would that look, how would that look in this instance? Would that? Those, for example. Here's what I'm getting at is, you know, whether it's parking or no need for a variance.
Um, well, there's. I'm not sure. I'm I'm not sure exactly what your question is. So there are two ways that somebody say could build. Four units on a lot in this in the future that we're trying to create with the middle housing. They could subdivide the land through this um new land division ordinance. That expedites the process of of dividing land and you would have to meet the standards. Um for the minimum lot size and required frontage for utility access. You'd still have to meet the required parking, et cetera. Um but you'd be able to do it under the new land division ordinance, which is much more clear and objective. But you could also build four dwelling units as an as a quadplex. And then not divide the land at all, but then you'll have to meet the supplemental standards for quadplexes.
So Mercy, I think the clear, the important thing is the clear and objective piece. And that's the reason, that's one of the reasons why we're removing the the P U D, right, is that that there is no. Clear and objective pathway that's required by the state using the current P U D process. Is that correct or am I wrong?
Yeah, that's correct. The P U D process is a. Thing that was created in the sixty seventies, uh when. Uh developers didn't want to stick to, you know, the base zone. They didn't want to do just one type of housing across a larger site. They wanted to mix up different housing. Types they wanted to do a little bit would be allowed in the R one, mixed with a little bit of what would be allowed in the R four. And they had to have go through this extremely arduous process, um which I think puts a lot of. Uh unnecessary burden on the developer. Especially in an environment where we are going to be allowing more mixed housing types. And and we have clear and objective design standards that have to be met, so the P U D. Really not necessary anymore.
Which is actually a good thing for you as a commission too, because some of those decisions that are made. It'll it'll be easier to make the decisions because we'll have a clear and objective path, which is required by state.
And you're going to have an expedited middle housing land division process, which allows. Um there you can get a. A a permit for a building at the same time that you get a permit for land division. Um so it's a sound like people might uh have missed the. Land division chapter that we sent out before, and I'll make sure that you get a copy of that. Are there any more questions? So I want to explain what, I'm going to talk about the uses and how we. Merged these different use zones into the three. And as you might have, you might remember from the attachment of the last packet. Where I laid out in a table all of the different zones and all of their different uses and all of their different development standards. Side by side in a tabular format. Uh you have, m- most of the land uses are allowed across multiple zones. It's not completely clear to me why. You had so many different zones. Um but there were some places where we had to um blend some things together. And I kept a log of of them. They mostly have to do with these um adult foster home, residential home, residential facilities. And also manufactured dwellings. Um so let me just go through these. This set here. Uh something that I brought up a little bit when I was talking to you, Bert, about co-housing. These do need to be um updated to be. Uh consistent with state licensing for these and definitions for these types of homes and facilities. Um but that is be a little bit into all three zones. And as you, as you can see, R M D is part of M H two now. But you can also see, I guess the main thing is that all of the housing types are allowed in all three zones. What will determine how big or small they are will be in the supplemental standards. Then we have these other uses as well, and I merged those three zones. And the reason that it became clear that we want, we need to keep S R R separate is mostly because they have. Um some uses that are totally unique, like motels, hotels. And the this tabular format of land use in a table will replace many pages of your narrative listing of land uses. Uh use zone by use zone. That's why there are a lot of pages in the code that are struck through. So that's the the uses, but I do want to talk about the development standards because I. I think um these are really important in terms of a form-based approach. But before I move on to the development standards, any questions, Bert?
Well, I I think that the uses and where they're permitted uh beyond the. You know, housing is something that needs to be taken a hard look at. And uh while that may not be the purview of this particular effort, it's important that as part of the comprehensive plan, that probably gets suggested.
Can you be more specific? Are you talking about where um commercial uses are allowed or not allowed?
Yeah, you know, like there was discussion about somebody wanting to have a corner store, I think, in the. And which would be, you know, S the old S R R zone and uh. You know, just want to make sure that uh, you know, uh live, work and. You know, some of those other things are allowed and uh. Uh I'm not sure why bed and breakfast are currently not not allowed in M H three. Where it makes sense since you can actually do a hotel in M H three right now, so. Any some of that stuff, I think, needs a a finer grain of analysis at some point.
I I agree with that, and I think that should be something that you ask for as part of your comprehensive plan. Further um ordinance and updates.
A okay. Put it on the radar.
Um. When one benefit of seeing it in a table, though, is that you can see. Those things that don't make sense, whereas I think for many years. It's easy to um overlook them because you're reading. Zone by zone and the land uses are all listed, and they often don't have the same exact names, et cetera, so. Um this is a better system, I think, for for minding in the future. Um, this is a better system, I think, for for minding in the future. Um, okay, let's, can we talk about the development standards that apply and you will see that? We have a, we've instituted a minimum lot size that's a lot smaller than what you currently have. And per direction that I received, I eliminated a minimum width and a minimum depth. And what I say here in this note is that. Um, I feel pretty comfortable eliminating the required lot width and depth standards. Right now you require forty feet and ninety feet. Um, or ninety feet, eighty-five feet respectively in two different zones. But as we're going to be instituting a floor area ratio, if we do. Uh, combined with the setbacks and the parking requirements. Um, I think those are going to have a greater determining uh effect on lot size. Does anyone feel um they need, we need to discuss this further before we move forward?
Docked by the conversation, but uh are we sure that that these uh? Shouldn't be less is the only question in terms of the yards and uh. So that's the only question as we get into a cottage cluster or quadplex or something like that. Do these need to be uh? Less than what we've had before?
I think that's a good, good question and discussion topic, uh particularly because we've had a couple of recent. Um, development proposals with front yard setback requests to reduce front yard setback. Number. So I think that's a good conversation topic.
Or residential uses?
Yes, multifamily use, yes.
So are we having that now?
Mercy, I didn't mean to hijack your your meeting, but.
I think we should have it at the next uh work session when we have more of the supplemental standards and some three D tests that we can look at.
That makes sense and I think that. Yeah, that makes sense.
Marcy, not to add to your burdens and you've done an excellent job so far. I I want to note that, but uh as you've gathered. Not being an architect or a developer or builder or anything, I have, I have a tough time with the numbers. And so a twenty front yard setback, I. I can't envision those things. If there's some way you could put pictures to dimensions. For the handicapped like me, that would be really helpful to try and figure out what you're talking about. I mean, is twenty yards? Is that a lot? I I don't like mowing twenty yards, but.
Twenty feet, yeah, twenty feet is.
Twenty feet, okay.
Twenty feet is a lot and um so. The way these tables work is the 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 uh unit of measurement is off to the left. So that we can get the numbers, just the numbers and not a lot of words in the table, so it's easier to compare. Um, but yeah, twenty feet is a quite a generous. Um, old fashioned kind of front yard and. I kept it in here because I'm not, I'm interested in in um the discussion. So if you people are. People would like to look at that, we'll come back with some three dimensional testing that shows twenty feet different.
Well, when whenever Bert speaks up about these things and I. It catches my attention and I'm trying to think what this is and I will go out with a tape measure after this meeting and. Try and envision that, but if you've got something that makes it easier to see than to. Intuit from numbers, that would be helpful at least to me.
Well, and and Tom, it's even more difficult because of the way the street right of ways are. Your lot of your street right of ways are a lot wider than the actual pavement is. So you have this perceived. Larger setback than actually is from the property line and many of the properties in Manzanita. So I can see why it's difficult to envision what twenty feet is from a front yard, you know?
Okay.
So, but but I guess I would say that twenty feet is a very standard front yard. Um, lots of times if people are doing alley fed where your garage is in the back. They'll be, they'll push it to ten or five feet even, but that's not a standard. Well, over the last fifty years, it's not a standard. Uh, you know, tighter than twenty is not standard. Twenty is very normal for most residential neighborhoods uh you'll see.
Okay.
Could I ask a question while we're looking at these standards?
Yes.
Um, when we're looking at the maximum building height in feet of thirty-five. Um, we just approved a development that took advantage of the um. Affordable um housing that increased the building height. To, I can't remember what the number was, but it was three feet higher than. Um, the standard or actually ended up being more because they. Took advantage of this additional floor option. And I want to just clarify that if we change the maximum building height to thirty-five. Then someone can or cannot come along and say, I want to add another floor above that. Or another thirty percent or whatever it is. To take advantage of the um. Affordable housing grants or standards or tax rebates or whatever it is that um allowed them to to um. Make that exception.
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying. Um. That. Can't remember the the name of that legislation.
Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven.
Right.
Just came up, Marcy, so I can address if you want, but I think you're Karen, you're right. What it, what would happen is if it's thirty-five feet, then they would get that ten percent allowance or a story. Whatever the definition of a, sorry, a floor, I think it's a story is what the term was. Um, that would then need to be defined and and I'm and Marcy. Again, this goes back to definitions and I hate to put something else on the list, but that may be something that we do define is what a story is.
We do need to define what a story is. I think you do actually, but um, yeah, you do have a definition for a story. I may have passed over it because. It it looked okay to me.
That's good.
So so if I understand you're right, Scott. If we say a maximum building height is thirty-five feet, someone can increase it above that.
Correct. For affordable housing products only. Based on Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven.
And is that the thirty-five feet? Did we just pick that number because it's reasonable or? Because it's. Um, quite a bit.
I put thirty-five feet in here because it's what we discussed at the last meeting as. The height that you had reached in order to help the multifamily project. Go forward and that. If if I heard it right, it wasn't that um. Big of a problem in terms of the context and yet it added a lot in terms of quality of. Um, you know, more generous floor to floor heights, better for living space. Uh, and from the difference between twenty-eight point five and thirty-five feet is not that great, but the benefits are. Quite um good, so that that's why I chose thirty-five feet.
Okay, but then if someone can add another story above thirty-five feet, then I that's what I'm trying to get at is.
I hear that.
Is there ever going to be a maximum building height?
This is a question um that we'll have to look into.
Well, and part of my reason for asking is that we have a lot of um undeveloped lots that are on slopes and so we would take the average. Um. Height of the average uh elevation of the lot. As as the, you know, whatever that midpoint is and the building height goes above that. So for lots that are above street level already. And if thirty-five feet is going to be the maximum, then potentially it could tower forty or forty-five feet above street level. And that I I just want to make. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I just want to be clear that that's what we're looking at or. So that's.
I'm hearing there's two, there's two things to look into further. One is how Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven would affect. Your ability to set a maximum, a higher height and a maximum height and kind of have something that you can predict. Right? But the other, to me, another issue that you're raising is how height is measured. And I did find this height, the definition you currently have. Um, to be different than other codes I've looked at where we're typically measuring from a midpoint. Um, of the roof, not just the grade and I think we may want to look at a more. Um, complete. Or anticipatory in of this situation type of definition of the height of a building. Okay, there's um question from Lee and one other person.
Yeah, thank you, Marcy. Um, I must have been asleep last week when we talked about or last month when we talked about building height. I find thirty-five feet to be incredibly obnoxious. And very imposing on neighbors and the community as a whole. Uh, but this may not be the time to discuss that. You mentioned that we need to discuss building heights. In general, um, in more depth and I'd be happy to. Lower my hand and wait until an appropriate time or. Can we discuss that today as a group?
I think we should discuss that today as a group. I think we should discuss the general idea of increasing the building height as a group.
Well, again, I'm just gonna gonna raise my. My concern about that and Marcy, you just mentioned a moment ago, forgive me for utilizing your testimony, but. You mentioned that six and a half feet greater isn't that much. I think it's a lot. And this community has been based for years on much lower building heights. We don't have. We don't have view easements here, but certainly it's going to obstruct a lot of people's views. If that becomes the norm at thirty-five feet. And I do agree with you. I have some experience. I do agree with you about. Different ways of measuring building heights, but we can talk about that at another time. So I'll leave it to others to chime in. Thank you.
Do you, so you want to take a little break and talk about the height for a minute here? I'm gonna actually stop sharing. Um, my screen because I I feel this is an area where I need better direction in order to move forward on a proposal. Um, should I call on Bert or John? How about Bert and then John?
Well, uh, I I think, uh, you know. Additional heights I'm a proponent of. But only if it's done in a elegant and farm-based strategy. And a thirty-five foot tall square box that's unarticulated. Uh, is not gonna work for our city. Uh, I think uh, an example of uh, you know, a sloped roof building that. Uh, is more uh fitting to our community is really the affordable housing project that we just. Uh, approved. So uh, I think more homework needs to be done. Uh, if we're going to increase the height to make sure that the height is only increased in slope proof buildings, for instance. And uh with some pretty significant criteria associated with it so that the. Scale of the building, you know, appears lower. And more fitting with our community, but a thirty-five foot tall square, an articulated box isn't what we want.
Is it, is it possible that it could be um something that you permit in the middle housing two zone?
Yeah, I I don't know, you know, um, I I think the the issue is I don't think we're gonna. Be very excited about a forty-five foot tall building if uh, even if it's an affordable housing project. So I think. Some homework on that, but that's where, you know, a a real farm-based code is pretty. Carefully described about the kind of form that gets the become the end result. And I don't think our height thing, while it, you know, has served the community well, it needs to be more than that if you're gonna go into a taller building.
Okay, I hear you.
Can I, can I throw in one more caveat, Marcy? I just wanted to point out that I don't. I don't, I would recommend that we don't build our zoning code based on S B fifteen thirty-seven. This is a Senate bill that sunsets. It's intended for to spur affordable housing projects, so it will go away. Um, I can't remember the date. I think it's twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight. Um, don't quote me on that, but. Just my recommendation is that that's a, that's a one-time thing that's not going to be set in stone that will sunset. So just to keep that in mind as well.
All right, John and then Frank.
Um, well. First, I I want to say I agree with everything that Bert just said. To add to that, I I noticed that we no longer have the eight-foot side yard setback. So based on what we're talking about, this could. You know, we could have thirty-five feet right up to the five-foot property line um. Imposing our shadow, our uh air availability, you know, free free air. Availability, um. And and my thought was that we had our discussion last time on the thirty-five foot of the height limit. Um, because of the. Workforce housing. Requirements and perhaps in the supplement, well, wherever the best place to put it. We could have thirty-five feet as a, and so we don't go through what we did last time uh in terms of. Having to make a um judgment call on how high a. Workforce housing building uh is just. They they get the third story. Um, but only to thirty-five feet and we retain our twenty-eight point five or our thirty feet or. Whatever we choose to make it, um, but the key is what Bert said, in my opinion, and that is. It's gotta be form-based and it's gotta be. You know, I I don't want to cast a thirty-five foot shadow on a building to the north. Um. In our quaint little town with small. Houses that are one and at most two stories right now. Um. I I think we need, I think like Bert said, I think we need to sort of. Not jump off of this thirty-five foot cliff at the moment. And uh think about it and maybe define our form-based um. Way of getting to thirty-five feet if that's what we choose to do.
Yeah, um, it's true that the daylight plane or the slope plane. The side yard plane that forces a a step back or a a sloped roof that did go away. So I'm glad to hear. Um, that you noticed that. We we can bring that in. That is a form-based, you know, approach. Um, I'm also hearing John that. And I'm interested in Scott's uh feeling on this, but that um the the workforce housing. Gets the third story. This might go beyond the sunset of uh fifteen thirty-seven. Um, but it still needs to be um according to a form-based. Kind of prescription that we made for Manzanita.
Right, but we do want to incentivize workforce housing as best we can and and more density in that regard.
Right.
And I would just caution too that um. Some of these products really are three-story products, so they would need that thirty feet. I mean, if you think about the proposal we just heard. You know, the nine-foot ceilings, they were there and with all the mechanical between the floors. The request is for thirty-three feet, which is a little less than thirty-five, but pretty dang close. So if we're thinking about wanting nine-foot ceilings in multifamily um. Development types, then probably the twenty-eight feet is probably a little shy unless you're willing to. Stay with that eight-foot ceiling. Stay with that eight-foot ceiling.
In terms of a three-story building.
Correct, but if you only want two, that's fine.
That's sort of, I mean, do we want three stories as our city maximum? And that's what thirty-five gives you, basically. You, you can do a three-story house in thirty-five feet and. No problem. And I, you know, I'm in favor of density, but.
Yeah.
I'm also, we have to temper that with the. Manzanita culture and the ambiance that we have in the town as it is.
Agreed.
Okay, I'd like to hear from Frank and then Karen.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Scott, just for reference, Senate Bill. Fifteen thirty-seven sets on January second, twenty thirty-two. And can be renewed at the legislature's, uh, discretion. So it's not like it'll just go away automatically and then you'll never have to be concerned about it. Appreciate that. Yeah, of course. Uh, our standards prior to this, when we had the previous discussion on the workforce housing was twenty, I'm gonna use round numbers. Cause I know they're twenty-eight point whatever it was, but it was twenty-eight. The state mandated, we had to give them to thirty-four or thirty-three, thirty-four, somewhere around there. And then we voted to give them the additional three feet.
Correct.
Um, and that's just for that type of workforce housing. That seems to be pretty much in the ballpark though, cause if it's, if, if our standard's twenty-eight and the housing dictates by the state. That we gotta go to thirty-four. And then we can allow one or two extra feet like we did. Uh, I don't think we're far off, but. I agree with John, it has to be just for affordable housing, and that's what that Senate bill stipulates. It's not for all housing. There's no way you're gonna just let people start building three-story homes, uh, you know, single-family residences.
Karen?
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure. Quite how extensive a form-based approach to design goes, but in the past. The Planning Commission has been very reluctant to. Require any specific. Design plans. For residential homes. We have no. Um, design review set for that because the city has been reluctant to. Tell people what to do with their own home. Um, and so I'm, I'm not quite sure. I mean, I think the, a, a form-based approach, I think is gonna take a whole lot more explanation. A whole lot more thinking. Um, so at this point, I would be reluctant to change that building height standard. To above, I don't know, thirty feet. Uh, you know, give people a little bit of extra headroom if they want to, especially if they're building. Uh, you know, a duplex or a triplex or something like that on a single lot to provide additional. Housing, um, for people that need it. But I'm reluctant to. Allow a standard that would say everyone who wants to build a single-family home can build a three-story home and tower over their neighbors with no other additional design standards. So I would be reluctant to change the, you know, we have the different slope of the roof. Has a different, allows to you to do a different kind of setback. I, I would not want to change that at this point until we have a lot more thorough understanding of. Um, what we're talking about as far as a form-based approach goes. Um, especially if we're talking about someone building a home that they want to occupy on their own lot. I, I would hope that they would not be too far different from homes that people have built on their own lots already. So I'm, I would be reluctant to change that standard at this moment. That's.
Yes, I'm hearing, um. A lot of reservation about the height increase until more information about the, the form, shape, the form-based. Elements of the code, um, which are supplemental standards mostly. Until you see that, it sounds like we, um. People reserve judgment on. Or really, I guess I'm hearing a lot of hesitation about increasing the height at all, even with, um. A form-based approach. So maybe we should table this, just, I feel like I've got enough, um. Of, uh, more subtlety about this issue now as a result of this conversation and we could, uh, go on to other items for now. But I still want to hear from Tom and Brad, so. Tom, you're muted.
The Affordable Housing Project we just approved, they got ten percent above the twenty-eight and a half, right? And then we still needed to give them. A variance for an additional amount, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we did that, but. When it went on the appeal, what happened was that the attorneys that reviewed it for the developer realized that the Senate bill also said one story. So they amended the findings to say, we approved the additional percent, but they were allowed up to one story. So we, so technically. They could have started with that request and not the, not the percentage and gotten what they wanted even without it. So I just wanted to make that really clear. That they, they, their initial request was for the percent increase, not for the story. If they would have asked for the story from the get-go, they would not have needed to ask for the percent increase, if that makes sense.
Okay.
For one additional story. I'm not sure if that helps or makes it more muddy. Sorry.
Well, I, I guess my view is, I, I was only willing to. Give them more because it was required by law to give them more and our legislators. Our representatives in Salem decided that for this particular. Use for affordable housing, then. They're entitled to that, but otherwise I'm reluctant to go any higher. For somebody that just wants a better view of the ocean. At the expense of their neighbors. Um, so I, I would leave things as they are, um. And just, the, if the law says. For as long as it lasts. That you gotta give affordable housing an additional amount. Okay, so be it, but I, I'd be reluctant to extend it to anyone else.
Agreed.
Brad, you're next.
I keep this brief because it might be digressing from where you want to go, but when Karen mentioned design review, we talked about building heights. And we put it into context to residential, let's say a four-plex. And we, we don't have design review for residential, but the residential becomes a certain scale in a neighborhood. Should that not pass through some level of design review?
There will be clear and objective design standards that are quite detailed. That'll be part of the package that comes to you next. They will. There will be. Um, dimensional standards that you have to meet for transparency, for primary entry, for facade articulation. Um, there's, I'm planning to bring to you a sort of standard set and we can build from there. But, um, and some of these are menu-based, so. We don't have design review of these housing types anymore because we're trying to move them into clear and objective, you know, by right approvals.
And that, Marcy's forthcoming in past June, and so it's not something that.
No, 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 that's part of this package. That will be part of our next work session. That'll probably be the biggest focus of our next work session.
Okay. So I'll look forward to that.
It's really important because, um. Really, the, the, the idea is that you don't, that we're not, we don't necessar, we don't have to do a design review. As a design review board or as a planning commission, because that's embedded in our code with clear and objective standards and. And when Marcy says menu. She says, well, you have to do these specific elements to meet our design requirements to be able to be built. Which basically is what you're doing in a design review anyway, because you have to meet those criteria in the design review ordinance. So it's a way that you can do it, that, uh, that someone can come in and meet those design review standards through a clear and objective pathway.
John, did you still have a question?
Well, I had a question, but it kind of got answered and it's kind of get thrown into our next work session anyway, so I'll probably bring it up then. It had to do with the form base and. Been down that road a few times and. I mean, I like it, but. It, it still ends up having some loose ends, no matter how detail you think you are.
Let's talk about it more at the next work session.
Right.
All right, so going back to the package then, um, I still do want to talk about this floor area ratio. Issue here, um. And I did prepare. Some things for you, um, for people who need visual material, including myself. Um, did some tests of this. Uh, so we could talk about it. So first of all, um, the proposal, let me describe it, uh, as we discussed it. Within last couple of work sessions was that there. You, you asked me to come back with a proposal to limit. The size of a dwelling. And it is, in its simplest, um, communication, so. I am very familiar with a number of cities that have done this, um. You, you know, Manzanita is not Portland, but Portland has been doing this since they passed their residential infill project. They've been limiting. The floor area ratio. Of a first house and then granting floor area ratio to subsequent dwellings as a, a kind of bonus, and it's worked quite well for them in terms of. Reducing the cost. Of homes and also, um, preventing demolition of homes. So what I have proposed, um, is it's a three-part thing, it's. It is one, first, let's establish a floor area ratio for residential, which you don't currently have. You only have floor area ratio today for, um, commercial. And that is, um, approximately a point six five to one. So I'm, this is, it's a starting place for us to discuss. And then. This footnote here, um, is the kind of second and third part of the standard, which is. So we're establishing a floor area ratio maximum for the first dwelling. And I've just done a really simple thing here. We could do this two ways. That, um, so the, the first option is limit it to an absolute square foot maximum. Or you could limit it to eight percent of the floor area. Um, that's, so you may have a maximum floor area ratio point six five to one for your lot. But you establish a, um, something smaller for the first dwelling and then grant additional. FAR for subsequent dwellings up to that maximum. There's two different ways that cities have done this and they are. Percentage of the FAR or, or a smaller portion of the FAR or an absolute square footage maximum. So I did prepare some information just, um, to help this discussion. I, now you're all planning commissioners, so you probably all know what floor area ratio is, but I just want to make it clear for in, me, members of the audience. Um, right now you have a development capacity or building envelope. This is kind of the shape of it. This is that plane that Johnny mentioned, um, that currently exists. And this is a lot, this is that twenty-foot setback, um, this is just a, a, a five thousand square foot lot. And, um. What we call the building envelope is the thing that's defined by the setbacks and the height and the daylight plane and. And in some cases where you have a lot coverage maximum like you do in R two. That also will work, um, to make that shape smaller. Um, and then within that you can fit some floors. And so if we're kind of gonna calculate the effective floor area. Of your current zoning, we, we see that. Right now, let's just start with R four, the effective floor area ratio is. Is point eight eight to one. And I want to compare that to your C one FAR, which is point six five to one. I was kind of interesting. I think that it's so much greater. But again, you don't, you don't use FAR. Um, and I think that this is typical of us in this, of cities in this or small towns, especially. Small coastal towns in this day and age where you never had really large houses built. Um. And people, but now sometimes people take advantage of. Um, they build to the absolute maximum side yard, the absolute maximum height, et cetera. They, they take advantage of this full. Building envelope and so, and a lot of. Um, places are deciding that they need to institute a floor area ratio for residential. But just to go through these, um, the R three effective FAR is point eight seven. To one and the R two effective FAR is point six four to one. Um, and that's smaller because you have a four, you have a, uh, maximum. Uh. Lot coverage. That applies only in R two. So at the last meeting when we were having this discussion, um. I think, Tom, you asked like what, what, how do we compare these shapes and sizes of buildings to something that we know, so. Um, that this isn't, um, these aren't residential, but it's something that we can look at. The Little Apple and the Polaris Gallery, um, interestingly, if you look at their floor area ratios. Um, which they're in the C one zone, so they would be allowed to have a much larger. But this is this, where they fall, um, Little Apple, point three three to one. Polaris Gallery, point five five to one. And that has probably more to, the fact that they don't take advantage of the full floor area ratio that has been granted may have more to do with the fact that they have to. Provide parking on site than anything. So that's just some background information I thought might be helpful for people to visualize and we could have this discussion about the point. Six, five to one. Let's have the discussion about, do people want to impose an FAR? Are we interested in that? Do people still want to? Are people still interested in? Some way to limit a dwelling size. Um, let's take those two to start. Lee?
Marcy, I, uh, I like the question. I think that a floor area ratio provides a much better measure. Of the effect of the building, the size of the building. As compared to a maximum square footage of, I think we were talking about twenty-five hundred, is that right? Um, so I, I, I like the floor area ratio, um. As a, as a more effective means of measuring building size, so. That's my two cents.
Would you, um. Would you, are you interest? Okay, well, maybe just leave it there. Um, so floor area ratio to you would be a, a way to more effectively. Measure building size.
Yes.
Okay. Um, John?
I, I, I like the concept of floor area ratio. Uh, and I think point six five is reasonable. For. A lot of the lots in Manzanita. But, um. There are. Ten thousand square foot lots, for instance, and I don't want to see a sixty-five hundred square foot house on one of them. Um. And. As somebody pointed, I think it was Scott, that that is trending in the world today. People are maximizing their. Um. A buildable area, they're building as much as they possibly can. Possibly for a financial reason. Um, but part of our job is to. Keep the flavor of the town we have and I, I like the way you've done it. Currently, Marcy, I, I like this point six five as a blanket, but limit. Even for even a big lot, limit it to twenty-five hundred square feet. Which is a reasonable size. I think a reasonable size house for our Little Beach community. I, I mean. I don't see a reason you need a sixty-five hundred square foot. Single-family dwelling in Manzanita as your second home.
Who else? Let's see, we had a couple of hands up. Did they go away?
No, Karen's up.
Okay, Karen and Frank, I think you had your hands up.
Um, thank you. I was involved in, um, the Planning Commission when we, my knee just went. Um. When we, um, imposed the point six five, uh, floor area ratio. on the commercial zone. And the reason that we did that was to ensure that the kind of businesses that are attracted to Manzanita are pedestrian scale. Pretty, pretty much pedestrian scale. I mean, that was, that was the purpose was to so that no buildings really terribly overshadowed the town. And and it's been pretty effective, I think. We've had some pretty decent development. With the exception of a single family home that was just built, but they're not subject to the point six five because it's not commercial. So that's something that I want to look at further down the road is is the commercial code. But I would, I agree with John that a maximum building building size of 2,500 or point six five, whichever is greater, I mean, whichever is less, sorry. That that makes sense to me on for residential. Thank you. I'm done.
So we had Frank and then Brad.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a pretty much standard assumption that a comfortable living space is about six to 700 square feet per person that might be living in a house. So if you have a family of five, you can do some quick math to see that you're at 3,000 square feet for living comfortably. I know we talk a lot about people having second homes out here, but there's a lot of us that don't have a second home here. It's our primary residence. And to limit it to 2,500, I think is a bit arbitrary and a bit small. If I have a family of five, be it because I have a couple of children or I have my in-laws living with us and you're trying to cap it at 2,500. Why? I I just don't understand that. That's too small and it's not reasonable. Yes, I don't want to see a 6,500 square foot house either, John. I agree with you. But I think we have to find a better ratio that's more realistic and especially with that standard of comfortable living of six to 700 square feet per person. Thank you.
So Frank, are you saying that some limit, but not, but 2,500 is too small?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I think 2,500 is just not realistic. These are not homes, you know, because you can't just assume everybody's building a second home here. Some of us build homes to live in. And some of us may need, not me, but some of us may need a bigger home. 2,500 is not or even if you capped it at 3,000, 3,000 is not huge. This is not just a cabin, you know, Manzanita, the people that live here, this is not a cabin town anymore. You know, people don't live in 900 square foot cabins. Some people do. But families that move here and people that have families and work and provide services to everybody else that lives here, they need space. So I just think it's
Five times 700. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, it's between six and 700 is is basically the comfortable living space that I think you would get everybody to agree upon. That's pretty much a standard. So yeah, somewhere between, yeah, probably. But that's a family of five. What if there's a family of six, you know, so you've got all these things that you have to wrestle with. I'm just saying, I think 2,500 is too low. I don't mind that, but not at 2,500.
Your more generous allowance for each person, 700 times five is 3,500. Would that be a better number?
Yeah, I well, yeah, I think you got to be somewhere around there. And even if you go on the low end of 600 per square feet, you know, a times five, then you're at least at 3,000. So I think that's, you know, a more realistic minimum.
If this is helpful for people that need a visual, I have a 20, I live in a 2,200 square foot four-bedroom, two and a half bath, two-car garage home, very standard. And I have four-person household. And it's, and it's, that's a very standard size home at 22. But you're right, Frank, I agree. If you have more than four or five people, you might need more than, you know, 2,500.
Oh, and not even if you just need it, if you want it, if you want to have a bit more space in your house, you know, for us to come along and clip you at 2,500. When you own the land that you can build a house on, I just think it's a little bit. It's like, hey, look, okay, we can tell you what to do and what to build, but let's give them some, you know, upside on the, and I'm not talking about building McMansions at 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know that, yes, generally, you know, four-bedroom, two and a half bath home is about between 2,000 and 2,500 square feet.
So Brad, before we go to you, I just wanted to go back to the question, who is it that asked at the very beginning of the meeting? If the floor area ratio should or should not include the garage?
Early.
Okay. Okay, so Brad.
Just I'm just seeking clarity then, because I think maybe John mentioned something a moment ago, and it's going to pick up on what Frank just said. Did I understand things correctly that that 2,500 square feet could even be limited to a 10,000 square foot lot? Or is it unique to a 5,000 square foot lot?
Well, it's one way of establishing a maximum. You could have what Portland does, which is that it's a percentage of the total FAR. But only a percentage of it is allowed for the first dwelling, a large percentage, but it generally that in that case, it would graduate in size with the size of the lot. The size of your primary dwelling would would increase.
That's how I understood it originally. So if you had a 5,000 square foot lot, right now we're talking about a 20, put aside the FAR on the code that is being currently proposed to be a maximum of 2,500 square feet. Unless one did an ADU, but as you graduate up to 6,000 or 10,000, that 2,500 square foot limit still doesn't stand, correct?
No, it does. I mean, if you go, hey, I'm trying to establish these two different ways that you could measure, you could limit, you could establish a square footage limitation that is the same no matter what size your lot is. Or you could establish a percentage of your total floor area ratio that is permitted for that first dwelling. You know, I'm trying to get a sense of where people.
I think it needs to adjust with the, as the lot increases, as I think, as I asked the question and now as you're asking for opinions, I think as the lot increases, the allowance for the square footage should increase proportionally.
So you have a 7,000 square foot lot, you should get a larger square footage for your primary dwelling. If you have a 5,000 square foot lot, it should be smaller.
Well, no, I'm starting with the basis of, I think, I'm using the basis, though, of the 5,000. For, for example, that I think was regular, which was proposed. I think we have the 2,500 square foot lot. Let's start with that. That was originally proposed, correct?
2,500 square.
Square foot, I'm sorry. House, not lot, I'm sorry. Let me clarify.
The proposal is you have a maximum of point six five to one for your lot, no matter. So that's, you know, increases your total floor area ratio increases with the size of your lot. Let me make this bigger. But for the first dwelling, you're limited to 2,500 or some number. But it's an absolute number. It stays the same no matter how big your lot is. And or you could do an alternative approach would be to set that first dwelling is limited to eight percent of your percentage of your FAR. So it would increase, you'd get a larger primary dwelling with a larger lot.
I think Mercy's saying the same thing. It increases, but it's a percentage of your FAR rather than a size based on the lot size. So your percentage goes up based on the lot size, but it's not a square footage number.
No, that's not exactly what I'm saying, but
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm definitely hearing that people don't want an absolute single number that they want. They, this, if you've got a larger lot, you should get a larger.
I think there needs to be flexibility and you shouldn't regulate it to a size. I think Frank's, if you will, his argument for conversation purposes, I think, has merit. And looking at the past, just to scale to keeping a home small, I think is is looking a little bit backwards. I think there's other criteria. I don't have the answer for what that other criteria is, and maybe others do, but I don't think just I get a little bit concerned with regulating it to a size that may not support a full-time resident that's got a family.
Okay, let's hear from Tom and then Bert.
I'm following behind as usual. Okay, so it sounds like there's two two numbers we're talking about to limit the size of the house on the lot. One of them is how the FAR is how big of the lot it covers, right? This, the structure. And the other is the absolute size of the thing. Okay, I'm in favor. You asked this earlier, but FAR, yeah, I'm in favor of having that. So we don't have a big structure dominating the whole lot. I'm also in favor of having a fixed size of square footage. It may not be 25, but I don't want to see that grow with the size of the lot, because that looks to me like you're going to be wasting land. People are going to buy bigger lots in order to get a bigger house. It Frank has persuaded me that for people who live here full time, unlike me, 2,500 may be too small. 3,000 seems a good compromise then. But I would have, I would be in favor of both limitations, the FAR and an absolute size, square footage, not varying with the size of the lot.
Yeah, a not to exceed sort of number.
Right.
Yeah.
Who said that? Not to exceed?
Oh, that was me, Frank. Yeah, whatever that number is like not to exceed, you know.
And if Frank can live with 3,000, I for that number, I can live with it too.
Well, this is helpful. I am trying to get a sense of where we can land to move forward. So Bert, what do you have?
It's a very important conversation, lots of good viewpoints. I come from a 1,624 square foot, 1926 house that has three bedrooms that worked fine for our family. So, you know, scale is different in the 21st century. I, I kind of like this kind of compromise thing where there's an FAR, but there's a maximum size. And if you do more, if you have a second unit or more affordable housing, then somehow you're able to get more square footage in that primary residence. But I also want to make sure that we're not limiting you know, by setting this point six five that we start to limit the cottage clusters or or other stuff. And so just need to make sure you know, that we're not getting ourselves backwards or in some kind of a loop. And I'm sure you can make sure of that. But anyway, so I'm a fan of 3,000 sounds good, although a point six five on a 5,000 square foot lot is 3,250. So I think 3,000 is a pretty good number and then encourage people to get more square footage by having a second unit or more units on the lot. And maybe it needs to, the FAR needs to go up a little bit with it too. If you have multiple units as part of your project.
Okay, very helpful. John, and then we're going to move to another discussion.
Yeah, the 2,500 is definitely arbitrary. I mean, I disagree with Frank that everybody needs a 3,500 square foot house. I think the six to I think the six to 700 square, I knew what you meant. Per families, it's sort of a graduated number, the six to 700 square feet for three to four people probably works. When you start adding the fifth and sixth person, that number goes down to 300 to 400 for the larger structure, but that's irrelevant. If if you want 3,000, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just wanted a limit on it. I don't want to, I don't want to see the point six five be allowed on a 10,000 square foot lot, because we've seen what happens in town. I would like to encourage multiple housing, though. So if we're going to limit it at a fixed number and you do have a 10,000 square foot lot, I would say, you know, you are granted another couple hundred square feet if you build a second unit or even more if you build a third unit. Because our goal here is to encourage density and encourage more housing units, not larger units is well, let me rephrase. I say we, my goal is to encourage more units, not bigger units for families. I know we have families right now out there looking for a place to live and they don't want 3,000 square feet. They don't want 3,500 square feet. They'd be fine in 1,500 square feet.
John, could I, could I cut you off for just a minute? I made your point. If there's more, feel free to go ahead, but I wanted to make sure that we heard from Lee as well. I think he's the only.
Okay, well, I, I think everybody knows my point, so I'll just shut up and we can move on.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I kind of started this suggesting that the floor area ratio is the way to go. And I, I, I was remiss by not including a maximum square footage as well, which several of my colleagues have suggested is the right way to go. And I would have to agree. I think we could, we don't need 7,000 square foot homes, but Frank very eloquently pointed out the need for some families needing more square footage than others. So I could easily support 3,000. Right now we're at 2,500. I could easily support 3,000 in a floor area ratio of point six five with a consideration, I thought Bert phrased that well, with a consideration that folks be given an opportunity to have more square footage if they're building ADUs or duplexes instead of single families.
Yes. Yes, okay. Thank you so much. This is really helpful. So look for a revised proposal. A refined proposal. So I, I have one last question to ask you about this table, the development standards. And and I think this you'll, this will make sense as a question when, now that we've had the discussion about floor area ratio, it's about the lot size maximum. Do people, this is not a standard that you currently have. Is this a standard that we need? It is, the way it's said is 7,000 square feet is your lot size maximum in the middle housing one. And then for middle housing two and three, it's 10,000. That would, you know, if we go with this floor area ratio approach and a maximum square footage for a dwelling unit, that maximum floor area ratio would increase, of course, with your lot size that you could add more additional dwellings on with that under a BERT style bonus.
Mercy, if if we have a townhouse project in MR three, for instance, the, the good thing about a maximum lot size would be that it would create a series of smaller buildings. Right? But on a 10,000 square foot lot on an MR3 with a point six five, then you'd have a 6,500 square foot maximum square footage to distribute over your townhouses. And so I just want to make sure that we're not you know, as we go through this, that certainly there's a single family conversation, but correspondingly, I want to make sure that we're allocating enough square footage for these other housing typologies to be successful. And I don't know what the answer is, but that's why we hired you.
So the townhouse would be on its own lot, though, so it would be subject to its own floor area ratio. So the townhouse would be on its own lot, though, so it would be subject to its own floor area ratio. But I think what you're. Scenario you're you're drawing is one that would apply to a quadplex, say. And um, we'd want to make sure that. That distributed over. And allowed a quadplex. Okay. I see, John, you have your hand up. And Tom.
Well, um, I mean, we have. We we've just permitted the Heron's. Nest.
Rest.
Or rest. Which was, you know, two point something acres. On a lot. So for a cottage cluster, I mean, obviously, ten thousand square foot lot's not gonna. Work um. I'm not sure. You know, I I start, when you first said that, I'm going, I don't have an opinion on this. Um, but I but I think we probably. Don't need a maximum. Um, because we have. Whatever the number turns out to be, three thousand square feet as a residential upper limit. You know, if you have a fifteen thousand square foot lot, well, that encourage you, even big houses. It would encourage you to build five of them. If it fit within the point six five FAR. I haven't done the math on it, but. Um, I guess my opinion is we don't really need an upper limit.
Okay, let's hear from Tom.
Uh, yeah, I just, I want to second what Bert said, because earlier I spoke in favor of restrictions on the size of a structure, both. The overall size and how it fits on the lot, but as he pointed out, I don't want. Those restrictions to. Defeat um. My other goal of in increasing the opportunities for multifamily. Dwellings in in on on a lot, so. I I don't know how that. Balances out. You probably do. Others may do, but I I don't want. I don't want to shoot myself in the foot. That way.
Yeah.
So I I second what Bert said in that regard.
Okay, I think it's gonna be, I think you're going to. I think we're gonna have a lot to talk about and and um, I think the next refined version. Will show how we can incentivize additional units. Um, with a floor area ratio, but also limit the size of a dwelling to three thousand. So.
Yeah, I want, I want my cake and eat it too, so.
Cottage clusters are exempt too, just that is a statutory uh requirement. Cottage clusters are exempt from floor area ratio, from. Maximum density, et cetera. They they are like kind of a pure form based code. Housing type. All right, I'm saying Frank, you're the last one on this topic.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh go along sort of with what Bert and Tom were saying, and then Mercy, is it? Is it just a blanket formula? I mean, because we were talking about specifically residential. Are there variations, though, when you get outside of the cottage clusters or single family homes? Are there variations that can be applied if they're trying to build a duplex or a quadplex or anything like that, or is it just a? You know, here's the numbers, plug them in.
I think the way it's supposed to work is you get, you have point six five. Let me go back, let me share this drawing for a second.
Okay, thank you.
So um. Say you're in the. This this zone here, um. This is the R three, but it will become the middle housing two, and. Um, you're going to have a point six five FAR that applies. You have this this amount of jello mold, kind of like. Jello. And you uh, you say you get um. You're building floor area ratio up here, we calculated it's about forty three hundred. You get about forty three hundred square feet of um. Of space to build. That's rough, because this is a bigger FAR, but let's say, let's say it's four thousand. You have four thousand square feet. On a five thousand square foot lot. Um, that's your maximum FAR. Or. I'm sorry, it might be more like what Bert was saying. It's more like thirty five hundred on an R five, on a five thousand square foot lot. Um, you'll get an extra. That extra bit of FAR to use in a scenario where you're building an additional unit. And the larger your lot, the more that extra FAR you get. So if you have a ten thousand square foot lot. You could have quite a lot of left FAR left over. From your three thousand square foot primary dwelling to use for extra dwellings. Does that make sense? That's the concept. And I might not be doing the math right, but we'll come back with math and three D models that show you the options.
Okay. Thank you.
So no max on the lot. Let large lots have extra FAR that they can use for additional dwelling units. It's kind of what I'm hearing. Okay. We um. We're actually almost at the end. I just want to go over the parking stuff with you. So I'm gonna share one last time, and then I think we can. And I hope in about ten minutes. Okay, off street parking requirements are listed in um. This table, these are the main changes. Is it really has more to do with? The number. So if we do um incorporate accessory dwelling units into this uh code amendment. I would propose. You would, you could have one space, but I propose, I would ask you to consider eliminating the parking requirement to none for ADUs. In any case, on um. Lots in the C one, we have to reduce it to one space per each dwelling unit. And where is my main setting? Sorry, must have eliminated a page, but it's one space per dwelling unit. Uh, something is wrong with my table here. Yeah, one space per dwelling unit on dwelling on on all lots, on all middle housing, and right now you require. Um, one space for each dwelling, for the first dwelling and two spaces for each additional dwelling unit. But we're going down to one per dwelling in it. I guess it's pretty clear. Don't really need to change amendment. Any questions about that?
I I have a comment. I, it seems to me that when we were talking about ADUs a couple of years ago. Um, that that we couldn't require. A parking space for an ADU. I I think that was in previous legislation from twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, something like that.
Yeah, Karen, I'm glad you brought that up because um it's. Been made clear to me by people at the state that. That rule. For ADUs applies to. Design review. But not to parking. It's actually, the state law is silent on parking.
Okay.
You can't, it's actually a choice you can make yourselves.
Okay. Uh, I'm fine with um. I'm not actually fine, fine with limiting parking because it's going to change. The way our city looks and feels. Um, particularly if people are parking um on the street or um, because we don't have sidewalks, so um. I'm grateful that the city council has reduced the speed limits to twenty miles per hour on all streets. I think that will help, but I'm perfectly fine with. At least taking a deep breath and saying. Let's um. Not require as much parking as we have in the past.
So any other, thank you, Karen, any other last comments about this package uh? Or desire for information in the next package beyond what we've talked about? I see that. Let's go to. Karen, did you take your hand down, or did you have something to say on this?
Um, I do have one, one thing. Um, and this is just purely a form, not to do with any um of the concepts. But if we're changing um the zone designations from R one, R two, R three, R four, SRR to new. Those need to be changed throughout the entire zoning ordinance. There are a lot of places where we, like a home occupation or. Like a cottage industry, it refers to certain zone designation, so I don't know if that's something that you're going to do, just to find and replace on all of those. As part of this update, but I would appreciate it if somebody would.
Yeah, it's my job.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's that's it.
Um, let's go to Bert and then John.
I'll just be quick. Uh, yeah, I think no parking for the ADUs is a good uh move. And then uh also the reduction just to one per unit, but I would also. Think that uh for discussion that uh. Units that are, say, five hundred square feet or less should not have parking required. And uh, once again, uh, you know, parking space at two hundred square feet for a five hundred square foot unit. It just doesn't make sense and just adds and compounds to the cost of the uh smaller units. So uh.
What would be your top through um? Limit then twenty five hundred square foot lot?
No. Uh, no, just uh, I'm talking about unit size and the required parking. Uh, I would say no parking required for an ADU. And then for discussion, no parking required for units five hundred square feet or less, which is essentially a studio apartment. Have lots of other things about parking, but we're gonna focus just on the housing.
Okay. Thank you.
Clarify, Bert, you're talking about on side parking, right?
Well, at right the moment where it it's parking, no matter where you put it, is required, and I'm not sure how we're gonna. Uh, demonstrate that parking is available on street. Uh, that's something that's gonna gotta get worked out, but I'm just not a fan of small units having to have parking spaces.
I agree with that. I don't want to get to a point where. The. The. Off street parking in front of a house is designated for that house or that ADU or something like that. I I'm I'm. I don't see how we can make that work.
You're probably right, uh.
Okay, we had one more hand.
Mercy, I I just wanted to say, the reason I had my hand up is just, I just wanted to say. You and Scott and the team have done a great job of getting us where we are. Right now, from where we started. I'm amazed. And good job.
Thanks for that. We have a lot more work to do.
We do, but you got us to this point, which I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Kudos.
I appreciate your help getting there. Thank you very much. Um, Frank.
Yes, and I uh echo what John just said, and then just for clarification. The the law in Oregon is that cities our size may not require additional off street parking for ADUs. In areas known for single family homes, so that's not really an option on our part. Even if we wanted to.
Where are you reading that, Frank? I'd love it if you'd send that to me, because I thought that was true, and I I've done. For years.
It it's uh, it started as South Senate Bill ten fifty one back in twenty seventeen, and then House Bill. Two thousand one in twenty nineteen, and then there's been subsequent um LCDC rules. That local governments generally cannot require off street parking for ADUs. Yeah.
Look into that, Mercy, too, because I'm I'm now remembering it might be cities of ten thousand or more.
Right, exactly. That's it. That's it, Scott. Yeah, that was the thing that I was trying to remember where I, yeah. Because of Manzanita, I was looking into this in a, in a more particular way than I ever had had to before, and I found that little silent point, so the.
Yeah, I I think it's for ten thousand or more. I did, um, actually, I did Rockaway's ADU. Ordinance probably five years ago, and they chose to have one space per. ADU as well, and I looked into this back then, and unless things have changed.
Well, Scott, this is uh urbanized areas of cities of greater than twenty five hundred and counties greater than fifteen thousand.
Well, there you go. It might have changed then since the ten thousand, so we we need to look into that, Frank. I appreciate that. That's a good.
Oh, no problem.
Well, that is the end of um today's work session. Thanks for all of your great. Help here getting us to this point. We'll have another work session, and then we'll start to have the hearings, and we will also be briefing city council. That's as part of our next steps.
Um, okay, so the, we're gonna have another work session next month.
Yes.
And at that point, um. So then hearings, are you talking about planning commission having an additional hearing?
We have to talk to Leila about this, uh, Scott, because um. We do, we're aiming for code uh. Adoption ready amendments package. That's what we have to deliver. So actually, the hearings part is I I. I may have spoken too soon on that.
Okay.
I think we'll we'll check, Karen. I think originally the schedule was to actually have the public hearing at the at the next. Uh, planning commission meeting. So that we could be, basically, when we get to June, we could have our first hearing if. The planning commission chooses to then send it at the next meeting, then we would have the next uh, we could go into adoption hearing at uh city council, so. Um, that was the original schedule, and it and it still is, that we would hold a public hearing. Um, at the next meeting. Uh, I will, I think Leila and Marcy need to put our heads together. To make sure that we could still pull that off based on the input that we got during this meeting.
Okay, so let me, let me ask the commission this. Um, if. We still have a few more loose ends to tie up and that um we won't have a code. Uh, ordinance ready language to present to council. Are you willing to have a second meeting in May or, you know, late May, so before the June um? Council meeting so that we can vote on a package to send? Commissioner is willing to do that, because I.
Or it takes.
We're uh, we're an hour over our our projected time for today, and I have a feeling that as we get. Details more and more refined, that we'll need. You know, an extra hour next time as well, so um, if you're all willing, um, try to keep some space open at some point. And again, confirm that with city staff, because. We need them. We need them too. Okay.
Here's my, my only other thought would be that it could be that we do go ahead and hold the hearing. And we do a work session, then a hearing, and then we can continue the hearing if we're not comfortable. That's always an option too, just in case. Because there's public noticing required for hearings and. A whole bunch of dates we work back from, it may be that we do schedule it as a public hearing, but that doesn't mean the decision has to be made at the next meeting.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Scott. Um, thank you, Marcy. Wow.
Yeah, Marcy, awesome.
Thanks, everyone.
That that was a lot, and I feel much clearer. About this whole process.
It's.
Great job, Marcy.
Okay, um. Scott, do we have anything on our next? Scott Gebhardt, do we have anything? Please, please don't tell me that we have a major land use decision to make.
Not not in May, so we could continue this in May. Um, and I'm looking at June for a possible subdivision.
Okay.
For Heron's Rest over on Third.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much. Uh, any other updates we need to hear about?
That's that's about all I have.
Okay.
I'll try to fix the issue we had. I've got a discussion with Josh when this is over, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for. Hanging in there with us, Scott.
I I I couldn't even stop the meeting. That's how bad it was on my end, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Okay, um, let's hope that never happens again.
Yeah, I don't need to see that again.
If you're all ready, I'm willing to adjourn the meeting. Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, everybody.